Number one, we're back from executive session. And can I have the first and the second to reopen the work session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls, so moved, again, welcome back. Well, first discussion today, we have members of the Quality of Life Committee with us to provide an overview of their goals and their objectives. And Councilor Kern, I know you've been behind this effort. And I'm going to ask you to further introduce the topic. But I just want to thank, I know this is a voluntary assignment, but hoping to codify through resolution after discussion with the board. And again, I just want to thank you. And you guys will be instrumental also in working with the complaint. And that was one of the primary purposes, is to get as much as the community involved so that we can all work cohesively. And Kern, take it from here.
So with that, I'd like to invite Connie.
Let me just interrupt a second, Councilor. We're just told by the booth that you don't have a mic where you're sitting currently. So we need to either come up next to Councilman Bayrod or sit behind you.
Right over there.
You know, put the mic up to you.
I'm going to sit.
Bob, can you please? Can you speak up, Bob, a little louder, please? Stalling everybody all the time, right?
Yeah, I'd like those guys to come up.
Bob, live by the same rules that you require others to do.
Why couldn't you speak up? Do you have a guitar?
Can you raise the mic, please?
Would you come to the front?
Is your mouth on the receiver?
Yeah.
Can you stay a stairway to heaven? Yeah, sure, absolutely. So what I'd like to do is invite some of the people from the committee, the chairman, Connie Lassandero, Rob Carpenter, and Diane Burke. Come up and sit here.
And again, welcome and good morning.
So I know Connie, you and I had spoken about this about a year ago, number one. Number two, and then I looked at other towns that all have housing committees. And I think it's really important, you have a really good experience, people right here that have worked with other towns. And I know you're also on the Suffolk County Housing Committee?
That's one of them, yeah.
That's one of them, yeah. So you're real knowledgeable. So you just want to give a, just a brief overview of what this committee will be doing. I know it's, we spoke, it's broad, which I express to you I'm glad about, rather than it being narrow. Better to be broad and start out narrowly and work your way open than to be narrow and say, hey, we need some more latitude. So why don't you go ahead?
Okay, well, I'm Connie Lassandero. And I guess I can admit to at least 40-plus years' experience in the housing field. And I'm really very grateful that you've asked me to do this for the town. You know, I live here, so I really, obviously, care about it. We have met informally the committee. And it is a very broad task that, you know, it kind of deviated from what we originally spoke about. But the ones that are on the committee right now have a lot of housing experience and knowledge that can be brought to the town and hopefully help you make, you know, good decisions and understand the complexity of housing. So with that being said, I have spoken to a few of them. And they are limited in the times that, you know, that what they can devote. So some of them may not continue to stay on it, but we can work that as we go forward. But in our first conversation, we kind of want to focus in on, because obviously, right now, throughout the nation, housing is an issue. And homelessness and homeownership. So we've kind of labeled it the three Hs, housing, homelessness, and homeownership. And that's how we see it going initially. The others can all come in with maybe working groups. Because honestly, you know, some of us don't have the knowledge for, you know, security, crime, and sanitation and what have you. So with, so what we would like to do is start on that. I've done a lot of research. And I mean, even some of the stuff that I'm finding recently is an eye-opener again. So if we, obviously, we start with the homelessness, which is a huge issue right here in Riverhead, as in every place. To give you an idea, they just did a point-in-time count in January. And that's your street homeless, which we have a lot of, more than we really want to see. But there's ways to combat it. And we just have to be creative. We have to be tenacious about it. This morning, there was a, the New York State just came out with a grant that they will provide up to $350,000 for someone to address the street homeless, going out, getting to know them, getting trust from them, and get them the services. You're not going to combat homelessness unless you provide services. You can put them in a house, you can put them in a room, it's not going to work. You've got to provide the services. And I tell you that because I've done it. This is what I did back in 2008. This is the 10-year plan to end homelessness for Nassau County. And we were well on our way with this because we were able to get monies in and we dwiddled away with it. Unfortunately, you know, with change of administrations, things get stuck on the shelf. So unfortunately, this got put on the shelf. But we've got the footprint here to help Riverhead combat the homelessness. That's one piece of it. Then, to give you an idea, and it was kind of interesting, the stats that came out of that point-in-time count, Riverhead had 16.5% of the homeless that was counted in Suffolk County. They only count, they only pulled in 136 people. Because it's hard to identify them. Some of them won't talk to you. So, and the East End had 8.7%. So that's like east of us, you know? And we know there's probably more, but it was hidden. Then, of course, we have the issue of our sober homes, also known as recovery homes. I'm actually working with Dawn Thomas to get her information so that can be, you know, hopefully corrected. And we can have some kind of, you know, regulations and what have you. Unfortunately, the state never passed the bill that a lot of us advocates that wanted it. And I know because I was on the sober house task force at the time. And the legislators just wouldn't pass it. And it's too bad. Then, of course, we have illegal housing, which we all know is an issue. But that, again, with code enforcement, it can be done, you know? And even with the, with code enforcement, with recovery houses, sober homes, there's ways to do it. And, you know, we can bring to the board, you know, different solutions, suggestions that you can, you move forward with.
I just want to make a point, and I don't want to forget that on your sober homes. And I'm glad you brought that up. In our Main Street, within a relatively short period of time, we have nine, which is substantial to any community. And so we need to address that. I have personally visited and met with the county in that respect. And so that's something that we can follow up on a conversation.
Absolutely.
So, and in regards to the code thing happened recently, we have a new attorney that's been, that took over the code. She's not new anymore.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. So you're pretty, you got a feeling at that by now. And she's been bringing Supreme Court actions, which we never really saw much before. Especially during COVID, you can't do anything about it. So, yeah, it should all be, you know, like a different prime, you know, five-prime effect possibly. But the sober home is something that is a great, you shouldn't have nine.
No, you shouldn't.
And they recognize it. When I brought it up, they were very surprised. They took notes and they said, okay, we need to help you in that.
Well, it's interesting that you bring this up because they can control it because they pay for the residents their rent through Medicaid. So they can control it. So it, you've got to have a dialogue with the commissioner over there. And it can be done.
No, there's somebody above that, so.
Yeah, yeah, you can do it. I mean, I, I mean, yeah.
But they placed interest and they know it would be gentrified. And they felt that this was critical to the overall picture.
Yeah, yeah.
And then comes your committee, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
And then, you know, the governor has a plan right out now for housing personally. And you all know that I'm a huge housing advocate. I personally don't think it's a good one.
It's terrible.
I think to cram down a municipality, what they have to do is just not the way to go. I've been around too long, it's not going to work. And I'll probably get shot from those that are, you know, other agencies that I'm working with that are for it. But I am absolutely against it. And if you know that they're asking for 3% of all the municipalities to provide housing within the next three years. And they want it in the downtown, I mean, you're transit-oriented, right? Have you, they want us to provide 489 new homes. Well, if she can find where we can put 489 homes in our downtown transit-oriented place, you know what? I'll take this back, but I don't see it.
Connie, homes or apartments?
No, she's saying homes.
Homes.
So it doesn't necessarily, I mean, I guess you could, it could be, she's saying units.
They're calling them units. And I'll add to that.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
I was in a meeting yesterday with them. So we'll add to that, I'll let you finish.
Yeah, it could be. But even still, 489 additional to what we have is kind of like, it's a little over the top. I think, that's my opinion. And then, of course, you go to affordability, you know? And this is something that I've preached forever. You've got your extremely low income, you've got low income. And then what we need to target on is our average person in Riverhead, the workforce. And I was surprised to see that out of the 185 CSE workers, 60% of them make less than $60,000 a year. So for them to afford 60% of the AMI rents, you know, you're talking about a studio for $1,120, a one-bedroom for $1,432, a two-bedroom for $1,736. That's a tough, that's a tough call for somebody making less than that. Because, I mean, if their gross is 60, we all know they're not bringing home 60. So, you know, that's another component that we want to look at. And I know everybody, and everybody wants homeownership. And it can be done. However, we have to be creative with it. And we've, we talked about this at our meeting. And, you know, I did some digging over the weekend. And the mobile homes are obviously the most affordable, you know, they, but. The only thing with mobile homes is the only one that will finance them is Island Federal. None of the other banks will touch them. They'll do manufactured homes, but they won't do mobile homes. So that kind of takes it off the table. As far as, you know, some of the lower-end homes in Riverhead sold recently from $450 to $500, I mean, on Doctor's Bath, there was a $500,000 house. You know, that kind of is not affordable for your first-time homebuyer. But with that being said, there's our ways to do it. We can do manufacturers, like they have the 3D homes, that would be a great thing.
The printed 3D, yeah.
It's built right there, it can go up, that can be affordable. You've got duplex townhomes, townhouses where you, and it has to be restricted and it has to stay affordable, it has to be owner-occupied, where they have the owner on one side and a rental on the other. So you're killing two birds with one stone. You're increasing your homeownership. I mean, you're also addressing the need for affordable housing. That works, I've done it, I did it in Nassau. It got a little bit of resistance when I first introduced it. But I went forward with it and it was very, very successful. And it worked. Then, you know, there's other things. I mean, somebody brought up that for the first-time homebuyer, the 2%, I guess Riverhead still opted into that, which, you know, maybe we need to take a look at that.
Well, we, where we stand with that, Connie, is that we have December 31st of last year to buy into and to opt into it. And Dawn has been working with that, right? She's our economic development. And I, you guys need to work together because we know.
They are.
That's great, you know? Because somebody mentioned that to me and I said, I didn't even know it.
Right, and so what we decided was not to opt in this year. And start working on, you called it the homeownership, we call it the first-time homeownership.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
First-time homebuyer.
So, so what we want to do is, we want to opt in so we can give those first-time homebuyers the opportunity, you can even give it to them as a loan. So they can move from that workforce housing and go into ownership.
Exactly.
And that's going to also have a two-prime effect because it's also going to help with our young professionals, right? We don't have anything, you know, somebody graduates from college with a degree and gets an entry-level job, maybe he's making a few bucks.
Right.
Starting off, he's got loans, and now where's he going to stay? He can't stay in Long Island. When I built my house here, I lived in Hampton Bay.
Don't cut it, sorry.
I lived in Hampton Bay for 20 years. And then I built a house here because I was always here, that's where I really was rooted at for all those years. And I had a place for my son, a bathroom. He was halfway through college. He was going to come back and have his place, get himself settled. He graduated, couldn't get a job. And he graduated in a high-demand job, which was computers. And he couldn't get a job here, he stayed in Albany and he's working. So that's, that's critical. And then getting back to the type of ownerships, you know, we'll discuss what's going on with that governor's because we should bring that up. It's a fairly hot issue.
It is.
There's been so many meetings that I've been to in the last two weeks on it. And I guess I will brief everybody on that because I know there's a lot of opposition.
There is.
But there is also other alternatives where I've been personally advocating for. But I'll let you finish and then we'll go back to that.
Okay. And then getting back to the first-time homebuyers, there's a lot out there for them. And we need to package it for them. For instance, Suffolk County, they have, I think it's $14,000 for a down payment, but it's zero interest. And they can, I think it's a five-year, and then they can pay it back. Or it's forgiven, I'm sorry, it's forgiven.
It's a soft mortgage.
Right, and then you've got your first-time homebuyers, the down payment assistance, I think Riverhead's going to have that. You've got, let me see, there was quite a few things actually on the table. Oh, you've also got the First Home Club, where if a tenant will save $5,000, the bank will match it with another $5,000. And then you've also got, which is, it's kind of kept a secret, is employer-assisted housing. And we have our biggest employer here in Riverhead, Northwell, and they have that. And they really put a lot of money towards it. So if there was an affordable housing that was being sold and it's somebody from there, as your professionals, we can package all this stuff. And what it is, for instance, if a developer says it's going to cost $450,000 to build a home, they can normally get about $150,000 in subsidies from, you know, different entities, the state, the beds. So you bring it down to 300. So what you have to do is kind of chisel away at that 300 to make it more affordable for the homeowner. Because don't forget, you've got taxes, you've got your homeowners, you've got utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, you want to make it where it's affordable for them. You don't want to set them up for something that is going to go and put them behind the eight ball and they're going to lose it, you know? And speaking of losing, to get back to the owner, the governor's plan, she eliminated the money for foreclosure prevention and mediation, which is really a horrible, horrible move on her part. Because you're going to, that has prevented so many families from being foreclosed on. And for her to eliminate that money is, I think, devastating.
Well, we don't try to trash any, not trash, but.
That's reality, and I get it.
Yeah, no, it is.
We need to advocate for that because there was a lot of people here in Riverhead that benefited from that kind of counseling. So there's a lot of things. And then, of course, with the first-time homebuyer, you know, we have to do housing counseling. So there's a lot of components to it, and I've spoken to Dawn about it. So, you know, this is just one aspect that we spoke about. I've got a lot of facts behind it. You know, there's, like, for instance, I mean, even the fair markets are extremely high right now.
I was just going to say, you know, this is the most difficult economic time we've seen in a long time. The rates are going up every other month.
It is, it is.
So all of these things that you're bringing to the table are very useful in a really particularly tough time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to give you an example. And this is in Bay Shore, which I was kind of surprised. And you're talking about, this is supposed to be affordable, units. You're talking about a one-person for a studio. The rent is $19.31. And you have to have a minimum income of $69,516. That's, I mean, you know, we've got to work around this somehow. I don't know how, but we have to be a bunch of magicians.
Well, that's why you guys are, you know, getting together.
You know, so that's what I'm saying. I think it's, it's information like this that I would like to see this committee provide the town board so you can make, you know, decisions with facts, not opinions and not myths. But you've got the facts in front of you that you say, you know, somebody comes to you and say, I want to build this and I'm going to charge this. And you say, well, wait a minute, you know, this is our makeup in Riverhead. So that's where I think our mission is, our goal is. Diane and Rob, if, you know, you want to add anything, please do so. This is where I see it going. And that's why I told Bob I would take on this challenge, I guess.
Can you, I know that we made some recommendations. We've been working on who's going to be selected on the committee. And I'm so confident that we have the best, the best. But can you identify the other members?
Yes, there's myself, Diane Burke, Tracy Stark, Rob Carpenter, Lee Mendelson, Patrick Vedoun.
Vedoun, and he, the real estate.
Yeah, I spoke to him yesterday and he's waiting to hear back from me.
Okay, yeah, just read the names.
Melissa Gentile and Dave Barsak from Dime. So that's what we have so far. And Dawn is on it, I'm not sure if Dawn is on it.
Dawn is a liaison.
Yeah, which is.
Whenever you have a housing committee, we need to, we need to have a person from real estate. We need to have a bank that we can understand. You need preferably, and we got the perfect person, somebody from housing in whatever component. So it looks, if we don't have the, for Dawn, if the business has been here for many years, well-known, that's why I made the recommendation. That doesn't work out, let us know and I'll.
Yeah, we'll get someone.
Well, as long as, I mean, the people on this that we just, I mentioned, are all really, I would say, knowledgeable and experts in the housing.
That's what we need.
And that's what they want. So I think if we focus on this and these other little, like, security and what have you, we can have working groups. But I think the first thing is if we start out with this, because this is the foundation of everybody's life, is housing.
Okay, so it's, and one thing that, Connie, is that you mentioned some aspects there that might have to go to planning, as far as the type of housing.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And the mixing and the mixed housing itself, which is the tenant and the person. And that, that all has to go to, that's, that's going to be a big effort. So it's going to be researching for quite a while. And I just want to mention the 800,000 units that the governor, the state, had dictated that we need to have, of course, Long Island for affordable housing. The matter was put forward to us and it was just rock out there. And a lot, a lot of people patted. Almost every supervisor patted. Where is this coming? We didn't know where it was. So the backlash was that the governor actually met with the supervisors last week and said, I know the delivery was somewhat not as open as I'd like to. Here, and we actually shared all our concerns. We, and the housing commissioners, we let them know that Long Island is very different. We have farms, we have vineyards, and we have the highest, especially Riverhead, has the highest workforce housing, I think. And with the other one, the affordable housing. It was very enlightening. Yesterday, we had another meeting with the commissioner, all the county supervisors yesterday afternoon. And it was all brought out, they're willing to listen to us. And I spoke to the commissioner and I was going to give her a Riverhead stance. And I wanted to the board before I sent it out, and through you guys, our needs. And it's starting to understand that there are a lot of needs. This is over a six-year period. They're going to give you three years to, they base the number of units based on the last three years ending in 2020 and the census. So anything that we reported, I don't know, Dawn, have we had any, yeah, we had affordable housing. Any affordable housing, that's right, the Main Street, all those units count. Okay, so they stopped in the year 2020. Again, this is why everybody's confused. So it was enlightening to know that we've had affordable housing since 2020. And I know that Rothwell has suggested, you know, we need veteran housing. We need housing for the elderly. But they want to downsize where they can go. And then that first-time owner, and I proposed that to the commissioner and council. So I think, great. Now, I think that fear hopefully is gone and they're going to amend. They're supposed to send us all the legislation, possible legislation that's in the works. But I'll send it to you. Now we can say we had 100, how many units was the building?
Which one?
Affordable housing, that's the only unit there.
Well, it's a, it's 116.
Okay, so if you're saying 489, one building, just cut that tremendously. So, but again, communication, having your, and us. And so we are, we're going to be working on this and there is room to go in a direction and do it right. And also, just so you know, it doesn't include those recommended, it doesn't include environmental concerns. So if you have farmland or it's environmentally sensitive, you don't have to space, some towns will build out 90%.
Exactly.
So you are, you're not forced to have those. They just base this on quantitative data that they got from the census, not looking at each community. So there's a lot, a lot of work. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but there's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah, yeah.
Has anybody considered the impact of transportation? Is anyone talking about transportation?
Yes, yes.
Oh, with the governor? I wouldn't even, you know, this is stuff they throw out of Albany. I wouldn't give it any credence until they just, you know, and they get the response from supervisors.
Because we're going to build housing without supporting services.
I know.
We are working with MTA. We are working with MTA, okay?
But we also need to work with the buses because that's huge.
That's, they agree to work with us. And we are working with the MTA because you build a density around the train stations.
You need trains.
And that's the purpose, is for people to go work and take the train back.
The buses that come out on the north fork, none of them run on Sound Avenue. None, zero. So it eliminates a whole section of places that are already affordable that have, there are no access, so they can't be built.
You know, and to get to Ken with the veterans' housing, I mean, I'm a big supporter of that.
Everybody is, yeah.
You know, I've seen it work. I mean, I had both my parents served in the army, so I really know, I mean, I feel for them. And I have to tell you, a good portion of our homeless are our vets. And they don't need a lot of space. And I've seen it time and time again. And I've done research throughout the country. And these tiny homes are perfect, perfect for our veterans. And if we can, I mean, I've got developers that are willing to come in and do it. If we can identify some land where we can start out small, you know?
We have, here in New York, we have a company located in Brooklyn at the Navy Yards, and they will build smart cities. Actually, that was a certification I got from MIT. And how, how successful it is.
It is.
It's quick.
Yep.
It costs a third to half amount of the funds.
Yep.
You can add elevators, you can add rooms.
Absolutely.
And other countries are doing it. There are a few towns in New York that are starting on that. I am so heart, so determined to.
Oh, I'd love to see that.
To make that work. And that's called smart building. And eventually, we'll bring it to the board. But it's not the conversation today, right?
Yeah, it's great.
We need to maybe make a presentation to the entire town, the board, enter planning, include planning, and give them the facts. And how successful it is, and how economic, and how effective, and how quick it is.
Right.
You know, we are Long Island, a lot of times, things take a long time to reach us.
Yes, they do.
You know, but wouldn't it be great that we could take the lead and we could work in that direction?
Yeah, it would be great.
And, all right, I don't want to.
So one concern that the committee had only met informally was the fact that the broad nature of what you'd like us to do was a little overwhelming.
I get it.
So we want to make sure that you're okay if we start with housing. We want to make sure that, we want to fulfill the goals that you have for us on this committee. And we were a little bit worried about the broad nature of what you're asking us to do, that we wouldn't be able to address all of that.
So we'll look at it.
But again, you know, it's, you're better broad.
Do you have the resolution?
You know, you're just, you're working on the three Hs, work on that. I know Connie's already working with Dawn on certain things. And there's all, you know, in terms. in terms of security, Tim, myself, Dawn are, are working with that, so we may just ask you for some, hey, you know, some thoughts.
Because we're heavy on the housing expertise.
Exactly.
We're not heavy on the security.
Yeah, but nobody's asking you, it's there.
Yeah.
Okay, because the two, you know, are like this, but we're not asking you to, you know, where you're starting is where you, where you need to be.
Yeah, because I mean, the safety does come into play with the housing as far as illegal housing and sober housing, so we understand that.
You know, whether you say cameras on all building, you know, that kind of stuff, you know, that's.
Housing coupled with homelessness really should be your focus.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a huge.
That makes us feel a lot better.
Major issue, yeah.
You know, Dawn wasn't in here, there's a grant out, Dawn, that I want to see if we can get, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address our street homelessness, it just came out today. So, you know, and, and I think a lot of it is too, and I said this, God, years and years ago, that the fact that the CDA office does not have a dedicated housing component really kind of cripples the town in, in some respects, you know.
No, they, no, they do.
Kind of do.
Well, a dedicated person that, you know, I mean, there's different ways, I mean, I'll show you.
That's true, we, no, we could.
That can generate some dollars.
I think we've kind of worked on this news.
Dawn, you're probably, you're going to have to come up because it's public, I know.
Tradelock.
Oh, here. Oh, wait, oh, no, Larry Singh, go to the podium. Oh, here, can I give you this?
Oh, God, I'm going to be that. Yeah, talk to her. I'm right here, I'm right here. Just the, the new piece, that security piece that we've been working on and that partnership with the people downtown to try to get a little more accountability and communication between us has been something I think our department could do and, like, I just had a conversation with CDC, CDC of Long Island this week, we think that the Second Street area is really ripe for first-time homeowners, so we're going to work with them and the county to try to purchase some of those homes in there and then make them a first-time homebuyer opportunity. And our department does all of the home repair stuff for the seniors through CDVG, so we really could expand that role if the board wanted.
Habitat?
We spoke to Habitat, they were not interested in helping us.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're about Long Island Housing Partnership.
Well, I have a meeting with them too next week, yeah.
All right, so we, we can, we can take this and just modify it a little bit?
I want to leave, I would prefer to leave it broad and let them start on the housing aspect.
I just want, with the housing is, is I just think there should be more of a focus on homeownership. Like you say, first time, you know, Sunny May loans, for first-time homebuyers, we have, you know, I think we have a sufficient amount of social service, housing and welfare homes, but I, when somebody's trying to, even, even the youth, my kids, you know, you, you, if you want to get a place and you want to rent your own place at two thousand dollars a month, it becomes like impossible to save money to get to that homeownership, so, so how do you save when you're constantly paying the rent on it? So I just think that I'd like there to be a focus, you know, especially with veterans have, have, have served times, you know, the youth in our community, meaning the, the newly married couples, people starting out careers, and then the same point, you know, our elderly that are trying to, you know, to stay and remain here but maybe need to downsize, you know, maybe, maybe it's, it's too much to cut the grass and maintain it all, maybe it's more of a smaller home or something like that, but homeownership and not, not rentals.
That's where my expertise comes in, so that's what I.
And that's exactly what I'm advocating at the state level, and, and it, it does apply.
Dawn's been advocating that for a long time.
Yeah.
We have levels, we need to get that middle section filled in and then that should help.
So we're taking it to the county and we're taking it to the state.
Rob, do you want to say something?
And I think to, to Councilman Rothwell's point, homeownership is very important because there's so many, there's so many businesses, and I hear this all the time, I have my, my, my workers, I have my older managers, but I have nobody in between that can afford to stay here, that feels that, okay, I'm, I'm here for a year or two, then I have to leave to go somewhere else because I can't afford to live here. And you have your thirty or forty-year managers and workers who are retiring and, and there's nothing in the middle, so the homeownership, the affordable part, to be able to live here is a key component to helping the economics of Riverhead as well.
And, and the, the mortgage rates, the last few years were lower, I think it helped tremendous amount of people that were able to get into homeownership because of low mortgage rate. Now we're seeing them all begin to skyrocket and, and now we're at a point where it's completely unfeasible now. Who wants to take out a mortgage when your rate is now three times higher than it was two years ago?
You can design programs, incorporate with banks.
Yes.
To combat that, so I think there's a lot that can be done.
There's a lot of parts to it that we can kind of leverage together, I think, to make it happen.
Okay, so I think.
And you mentioned tiny homes, which.
Yeah.
Smart homes.
Smart homes, yeah, the same thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, and also, there, from my knowledge, there is, you know, there's, we have, we have two three-D printed houses in Riverhead.
Right.
There's one in Calverton and there's one on the road, I don't know, Tim, right over here, right past Social Services on the right, I don't know the name of it.
Yeah, I'm drawing a blank on the name of it too, I know the road well.
Yeah, but if you go, if you go down that road, you, you'll see that house and it's, it's my understanding that they have, that they're looking at doing a residential thing, you know.
Yeah, there is.
And there's sixty dollars a square foot to print.
Yeah.
So anyway, I want to thank you guys.
Let me just say one more thing, because the supplies, and maybe we'll have to go back to being entertainers, a couple of years ago, we, we spoke, Legislative Khan had mentioned the, the homes, if, I, what was the name of it, it was similar to small homes.
Yeah.
That you can.
Oh, Carahan.
Carahan, yeah, yeah, yeah. And you can, there was legislation in place, there was CECL, a general CECL was going to be in place, there was going to be funding, and these were the area that we wanted to go, and at that time, I think it's the concept, I presented it to the board, the concept was fully like, ah, we don't, not sure about it, maybe we should come back and have her and, and discuss it so you can see.
I think the only issue with that was just location, that Route Fifty-Eight was not really the ideal.
Well, there wasn't that, you can build or use the box doors, so, yeah, right, so maybe, I think we should bring that back, because that's a perfect example, you have full state support and they were going to do the CECL.
Interesting, that's, that's huge.
Yeah, so I'll speak to her again and we'll put you in touch and that could be huge.
Okay. You know, we're here to help and we just want to be able to give you the information that you guys need.
And it sounds like you've assembled the perfect team to do this.
It's a good team.
It is.
It's a very good.
You know, I just want to, I'm sorry, just want to add this, like, on the Business Advisory Committee, there are working groups, right? Which I think was the smartest thing that was ever done with a committee, and the fact that you guys are doing that because you have this many people, but once you get, you know, three, two other volunteers that will help in a working group, like when we did the Two Fifty-Five event code, we had twenty-seven businesses showed up to be in a working group that were not on the committee, so.
Well, I think you have the advantage too, that we're all kind of cross with all these committees.
Right next to you, Josh.
I know, well, thank you, thank you, Rob.
Close proximity.
Yeah, we're on business.
Just walk there, drive there. Well, thank you again for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting that we have such a great committee.
Thank you.
It's good to see such good work. Okay, Connie, give that to. Thank you, thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, for our second discussion item, it is related to the use of a software program in our accounting department, I'm going to ask our financial administrator to come forward and discuss this matter. And when we have, Bill, it's just you, right?
Yes.
Morning again.
Good morning again.
It's still morning, okay.
Yes, it is.
We've been at this since nine, so, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a accounting software, it's about five or six years old, it's limited in what it can do, and with the, the budget software that we now have is limited, it's old spreadsheets that I've developed for the last fifteen years, not integrated with anything else. We were looking at different budget softwares in order to make our presentation of the budget open, streamlined, and there's other functions of a couple of softwares that we looked at, so it will improve the efficiency, the efficiencies and features of what we have now in our accounting software. I'm looking to purchase two modules, which is the budget software and a personnel software, which imports everything we have from ADP and it's real-time as to the employees that we have at the time of the budget. In order, in order to do that, we have to link our, the new software that I'm looking at to both admins and the ADP, and it becomes seamless instead of labor-intensive, okay? The software that I'm looking at also has other add-ons that we can do after the fact if we want. I know that Councilman Kern is looking to do online or improve our online collections. We have a citizen service model with the One Clear Gov product that I'm looking at, so you have, it's got an online service portal, it also says you can schedule inspections online in that module, there's workflow management for grants and for capital projects also. Looking to purchase this for this upcoming budget season so that we can streamline what we're doing. And also, they, they've won awards for presentation of budgets, there's a CAFRA, which is a comprehensive annual financial report that we can produce from this module. It's, it's an updated audit report that we would get done by June thirtieth in order to do that, and that's going to improve our presentations to the public of our financial statements, it's going, it's going to go well with Moody's in our bond rating, they look at that kind of stuff to show that we have, there's, there's additional information that's given to our basic financial statements to both Moody's and the general public, okay? So they look favorably on that. There's a cost to this, there's a one-time setup cost for the clock, for the product, I'm looking at twenty-four thousand dollars and then it's about twenty, about thirty-six thousand dollars a year going forward. It's hosted in the cloud, it's secure, this is secured with EWS, which is.
How much a year?
Thirty-six thousand.
So you're going to pay twenty-four thousand to set it up?
To set it up.
Plus thirty-six for the first.
Plus thirty-six, and then we can add modules.
And you also, five, five years, sorry, you said that.
Sixty thousand dollars the first.
I know. Yeah, five, five, five to six years ago, you stated that we got a new software, what did that cost and what makes it obsolete?
It's, it's not obsolete, when we bought the previous software, there, there are a couple of different government accounting softwares, the product that we went with was a product that they used, there was a couple of towns throughout the state that used that, but mostly villages, so it's a watered-down version of a software that we were looking for, but we couldn't afford anything more than that. So now it's, a lot of the reporting and even the communication with our budget or anything else is labor-intensive. Instead of looking for a new piece of software, this software lays on top of that, pulls information in on a real-time basis for both payroll and our financial software, which means we would not have to purchase another software in order to get better functionality.
And am I right that it makes the jobs of everybody in departments.
Everybody, not only that, in, in the budget process, it's an open process now, every department head has access to that, if they want real-time information as they're requesting budget information.
I was just looking at departmental collaboration was one of the things that struck me, is like, that's very important and I think that if that offers that, it should be good.
Everything's in, everything's in one place where I don't need to sit and, and maintain these spreadsheets and go back and rerun reports based on a question from either a department head or the, the budget process itself. It allows us to give what-if scenarios, so if we were going to do this or that, what if we did this, how would it affect our budget as we're going through the process? It also allows the departments to go through their budget throughout the year, to see where they are with their budget and see what things are actually costing them as opposed to requesting a report and then trying to put that information in an Excel spreadsheet like Ray does a lot of times in his programs to see where I am here. They can go in at any point, pull that information out and have the information available, of which at that point, that report is available to whoever we give access to, obviously then the board would have that without having to request that, we can just go in and see what.
Could this be helpful in justice court?
I don't know about a justice court application, but if the information is in admins, then we can upload it real-time to, to, now, with, with accounting, we're only paying bills every two weeks, we're collecting revenues all the time, we wouldn't necessarily, we, we would upload the information continuously, but justice court, if their information is being entered into admins or if their information is being entered into the state program, I can ask the, I can ask Open Gov if they have access, because a state program would then have to just be written or be able to export a CSD file in order for them to upload that.
I imagine the bigger portion of money for this is the cloud, the yearly payment is used to the cloud, similar to the police cameras. The cameras cost X dollars, but to store it into the cloud, the data into the cloud is where the big expense comes in for the use of, for the police cameras.
Correct, so that, so that information would then be secure up there, the AWS is Amazon's cloud, you have Azure, which is Microsoft, and AWS, which is Amazon, the two biggest cloud.
Okay, I'm going to make a recommendation because I didn't have time to digest this, I know you mentioned it to me and I said, yeah, bring it to the board, I really do, the members want to bring stuff up, but I need to review, I, I don't see, how much money, and I did ask the question before, five years ago, did the software cost us?
I, I will find out.
I don't think a software becomes that obsolete in accounting, because you're dealing with a process that's a built-in process over and over again, so I need to find out the funding, I also need to find out the differences, we're not talking, you know, a, a pocket change here, we're talking about, what'd you say, twenty, twenty-four thousand and then thirty-six thousand, and we've also increased your, your department, we added an additional person to your budget, and I would like to discuss this with the board and it'll be a quick turnaround, but I think that we should, you know, we're asking the board to give me the opportunity to look into these matters and report and have a dialogue with you.
Is there just any other options towards decreasing that thirty-six thousand dollar a year in the other storage networks? Is there anything in which I, our personal IT department can do, so that there's less services that we got purchased, so thirty-six thousand dollars a year just for storage seems.
Well, it's also, it's also software.
Something which our staffing can do or like.
I'll, I'll find out, I'll find out if there is anything, but that thirty-six thousand isn't just cloud, that thirty-six thousand is updates to the software itself, support for the software itself, and then the, you know, storage up in the cloud, and that, that's an additional cost, that adds to that thirty-six thousand dollars.
Is there, is there even a larger, like, can you, a one-time where you, you train a program, or, you know, train a particular employee to manage and run the whole system and then in the long term, you know, that the yearly support network would be less or something like that?
There's, there's not going to be, because it's specifically written code that they update, that's what we're paying them for, is to update it, as I said, part of the annual cost is the update, is the support that we get, which takes away from our employees' time to actually do that. The twenty, the twenty-four thousand dollars, I just wanted to mention this, twenty-four thousand dollars is the one-time setup, so when we add other programs, we don't have to pay for setting up of those programs because it's already set up and they have all of our data, it's just adding that additional program and whatever it may be, if again, we look at.
So is there a savings then on the flip side, is there a savings in personnel?
Right.
Payroll expenses over the next year, so you're saying that somebody has to do less work?
What, what will happen is the information that you get, the timely amount, the timeliness of the information that you're asking for and the detail is open to everybody, and again, even the department heads who are looking for information, it's all there at their fingertips, we're setting it up once, yes, do we add additional basically reporting if a department wants that, well, I want to know this, well, I'll add a report to that and you can just click on that report however often you need to. So if Ray does need to sit in front of the Recreation Committee, he can go in and just click that report and refresh it because there's been additional revenues or something else available in those projects that he's, that he's looking to, to go forward with. So it just makes the information more readily available, seamless, there's a lot, a lot less labor during the budget process, every time there's a change, that becomes significant. Every time there's a change, that becomes significant hours in order to make those changes. I, I have about 13 different spreadsheets that are all linked to each other. Each spreadsheet, I have one spreadsheet that has about 45 or 50 different tabs that take information from health insurance to this or to that, that bring it forward. When we have a new estimate on the health insurance increase for the following year, it's just going to be right there now. Okay? Also, we're negotiating contracts. We can do what-if. What if we gave the employees this or that? How does that affect the budget? So all of that stuff is just intuitive going forward and will give us that much more information to make some of these decisions.
Bill? I'm all for, you know, having efficiencies in place so that work can be done more readily, more quickly. I would defer to the supervisor to look into it and have the conversation and come back. But I'm all for the departments, departments, each department being more efficient in what, what they do.
So I will, I will get the original cost of admins and, and then I will give her all the information that we have here. I think I sent you information this morning. I do have other information on the modules itself, on the other modules. So I'll forward that, I'll forward it to everyone and the supervisor can look through it. And the, the company itself is willing to answer any questions the board may have. There were two other companies that we looked at and it's, when we went with our accounting software, we bought what we can afford. This thing gives it a boost of what we can now produce. To go with one of the other companies that doesn't really do the same thing that this company does, you, you can't get the real-time information on some of the other companies. We have to enter it anyway. That takes away of, and, and the pricing is right around the same amount anyway. So this is the one that I would recommend. If you'd like to see one of the other companies, I send, I'll send you that too. But this is the company that is going to be able to do everything that I'm mentioning here.
Bill, can you give us, can you give us an idea of what the, what you'd save in labor? That would help to understand, you know, what, to amortize that into what the cost, not amorti, you know, take it away from what the cost is. That's number one. Number two, is this seamless with Open Gov?
I don't, I don't know. Open Gov?
The reason, well, what, what is it seamless with? We talked about, does this give us the ability for people so we can do online applications everywhere?
Yeah, well, I mentioned the ones that they have advertised, but it's really a matter of, and even our, our software admins, they work with because I think a lot of people are realizing the limitations of admins, although they're good for processing payments and all that. But I know that they have relationships with other software companies to be able to efficiently upload this information. And I can find out if they have that with Open Gov.
To make it simple, yeah. So Open Gov is another piece of software. Huntington's using it currently, right? They're ecstatic about it.
All the governments
Yeah, I believe and I'm not certain, Hemsted is using it as well. It's, it's, in Hemsted, it's saved them well over a million dollars a year using the software. I would like to know that with Clear Gov, who's using it? What towns on Long Island are using it? You know, I would like, I'd like to speak to a few towns, whether they're on Long Island or not, and get their experience in, in using the software. I know Brickhaven has written their own, but if you would check with Huntington, Chip has the contact information that would be useful.
Well, you might want to
This is, this is Open Gov. This, this is Open Gov.
That's what I
Yes. Clear Gov is one, is the competition. I'm confusing them.
It's a competition.
Yes.
There's a big, hold on a second. There's a big difference between a competition and competition means that you're building, it's like Apple is not going to be in line with, with the competitor Samsung. So that's what a competition is. So this is not good, this
You're saying this is Open Gov?
This, this is Open Gov.
So what is it Clear Gov?
Clear Gov is the competition. So if I sent that one instead of Open Gov
That's what I thought. So you sent me Clear Gov when you're talking about
Yeah, I said, I, I, I'll forward you the Open Gov.
Apples and oranges.
No, no, he said the wrong
Bill, with $36,000 a year, is that straight-up additional cost? Or what are we paying right now for support network? Do we already?
We're paying for support on admins. This is, this will be additional. Admins is, is $45,000 a year for support.
So this is 36,000 on top of admins?
Yes.
And you're going to keep the same amount of employees? We just last year, because you said there was more of a workload, so we gave you another employee. And anytime an accountant comes in, the salaries are astronomical. And, and you always, support raises 10,000 for the, very high percentages because of their specialization. But now we're going to go and spend this huge amount of money and going to keep the same amount of employees. When you digitize or you go online, it's for efficiency and also to save money. So you're telling us pay 60,000 more a year, but you're still keeping employees. And maybe later on, I might need another employee. So in either case, that's one thing to help, that we should have a discussion on. But I have, I, I ask the board to please support me. Let me research this. If it had the opportunity, I need to see what the software, I need to find out the amount. Five years on a software that probably costs us a huge amount of money. It's not cost-effective. And we have to, you know, you can't just come in and, oh, it looks good. It's efficiency, it has access. So I'm asking the board to give me a little bit of time to research and I'll get back to you. And then you can, guys can decide.
So I just want to clarify, our employees, we had 14 employees in accounting, including IT at one point. We're down to nine. Okay? And that was because we, as people left, we were doing things more with less. We've added one employee in IT, as we know, and that we're sharing with PD. Okay? So we're not adding more employees. We have, we were short an employee just before COVID and we're not able to hire that person, been doing without that person since then. And that's one of the reasons why the office is, you know, is struggling. So
Hold on, you've had various employees come and quit within a few weeks and a few months. So there's been, there's been a lot of transition there.
We haven't had anybody quit within a few weeks or a few months.
Caitlin left to go to the fire department and then you
Five and a, five and a half years. Five and a half years.
No, Caitlin just left.
She worked for five and a half years, not a few months.
Oh, oh, no, no, five and a half years.
Yeah, five and a half years.
It's okay, we're not going to get into, so we need to try to
I know, I'm just clarifying that we have less employees than we ever did and we're doing more. And, and this is giving, this, this is a value to the town, as, as I explained. As far as employees are concerned, we did add an employee. As I said, we have an additional employee in IT that is split between police and the town. And he's got programs going on there, whether it's cams or whatever it may be, that need that. And so that's the additional employee that we added. And we're still at nine employees now.
So Huntington has this, so Chip has the contact. The data's out there. We're not re-inventing the wheel. How much money did they save? They have the information. Let's find out. Talk to Hemsted as well. We don't need to, you know, I have no opinion on this one, however, except for what the data is.
Okay. No problem. So we're going to move on. Thank you, Bill. We've got a little bit of work to do. So we're going to continue on to our next discussion, which is matters surrounding possible car change related to Chapter 289, 17B, related to parking at Waiting River Duck Pond. Deputy Town Attorney Danielle, where is she? It's a busy day for her today.
She was here.
Yeah, she was here. Is here to review the proposed change for us and you're back.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay. So this is a code amendment regarding parking that was brought to our office by the chief along with the Traffic Safety Committee. This has to do with
I think, and I think just to expand on that, I think a request to the chief by one or more of the businesses down in Waiting River businesses.
Okay, so you're going to request to the chief?
No, the chief requested this.
Oh, okay, great.
So Eric's right, there are businesses along here. So just for reference, we're talking about the parking lot at the corner of North Country Road and Sound Avenue, which, there's the two duck ponds right there. And there are businesses along, I think this is Sound?
Yeah, it's Sound Road, not Sound Avenue.
Okay.
North Country and Sound Road.
Right, Sound Road, thank you.
Right, it's the duck ponds.
The businesses on Sound Road also contacted the chief and the Traffic Safety Committee. There's no parking right in front of their shops. It's a fire safety zone. So in order to have some turnaround and patronage in their shops, they were discussing wanting to set one-hour parking limits on the seven spots. I provided a map on which seven spots would be limited to one-hour parking.
Yeah, I know the area. There used to be a barbecue place right there and you'd have to go into the big parkings, into the big parking lot and then walk across the street. So I understand exactly what you're saying.
I love the fish place. Where's the name of that place? I love it.
There are the fish place. I go to the breakfast place, Brekkie.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And what, what is the chief, what's the chief's take on this?
Yeah, maybe he should have been here.
Is he in support of this?
It was his, he brought it to us.
I mean, I, I think it's really smart getting where this is and I do go to that fish place and
Yeah, it is, go ahead. Okay.
I mean, if they're, if they have businesses that typically have, you know, a one-hour or less turnaround, then I think, you know, I think it makes sense to accommodate them to some extent. You know, it's really, it's a question of how many of those spaces do you want to designate in that fashion?
Am I correct that there was a restaurant here on, just to the east of it?
Restaurant is to the right there.
Yeah. Okay, so that might not apply to the one-hour
This is what's going to happen. So, so changing this, there's a couple of impacts. So number one, you have a very successful restaurant there that does very well, that relies on that parking. So you would be taking seven spots away from not just the restaurant. And the, you know, I know it's a municipal parking lot, but, you know, you also got to keep in mind that you've had businesses establish themselves based on the existing parking. You also have the Congregational Church, which is just across, so they have events and things like that. And, and so, you know, they have events on a Saturday afternoon and you're telling them that they, you know, they, there is a parking lot for a congregational church, but they utilize it overflow. The Waiting River Fire Department, right up around the corner, all of their events, public events, they don't allow any parking lot, any parking in the fire department parking lot because they always reserve that for first responders. So you have people walking up from St. John the Baptist and then you have people utilizing this parking lot too. So if somebody has, you know, the fire department has an event at their house, you know, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, whatever it may be, you're, you're limiting them now, you know, as well. So there's, I'm not, I'm not saying for or against, but I'm saying that does impact, a lot of people are relying on this parking lot.
What are the total number of spaces in this lot? Because this lot is larger than what we see here in the photo.
I was trying to figure that out too. Looked like maybe 25 additional spots outside of the seven. And then the restaurant's got like a few right alongside tucked in on there. There's like a little inlet, you know, it's behind their restaurant, which is probably
So roughly a quarter of these, a quarter of that parking lot would be one-hour parking?
Yeah.
Roughly 25% of that parking lot would be one-hour parking?
Can you do two hours so you can have food and walk around?
Clearly, this is an attempt to prevent people from parking here for the restaurant. I, I don't see any other
Right. That's where it appears.
Exactly what it is, is the restaurant takes an hour to eat longer, you know?
Yeah, order, busy, you talk to people, you go next door, you know, get something in one of the shops next door. You walk right along. So, yeah, it's clearly to prevent. And it, it's interesting that they said the businesses made this recommendation, so something
Well, there, there are smaller businesses across the street where the deli isn't that. So I, I understand their, their approach to it. I don't know if it's about seven parking spaces, maybe it's too much in my, my mind. You know, and, and
Well, this would go to a public hearing on a change anyway, right?
It would.
That's an interesting point.
Yeah.
This is just to get feedback from you guys first.
Like I say, you can park in front of the duck ponds, so you can park along North Country Road. So there is other parking there. I think this is, they're trying to mark the spaces directly, you know, the closest to their proximity of those businesses across the street.
Well, if we go to public hearing, we have to generally go to public hearing based on this because we can't really change it.
Whatever the proposal is, right?
Yeah, whatever the proposal is, so we would make adjustments.
We could change this. There's no
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There's no resolution directed at this point.
Right, so
The public hearing should be on seven spots or it should be
Right, that's what I'm saying. So let's see if we're going to amend this and then go to public hearing on that. So I'm not too crazy about that. Not, not in that location. I don't know how the board feels.
I think it's worth a public hearing. I mean, I, I'm familiar with that location and, you know, I mean, I understand. I've never really gotten jammed up there when I've gone to sit down and eat in the restaurant. But I understand from their perspective, if there's no parking, then people are not going to come into their restaurant.
I do frequent the restaurant and when I go through there on a regular basis, it is, most of the time it is full. You know, for the evening hours, for, for dinner time. And so I do the circle through the parking lot. It's often full and then I do park out like basically on North Country, over front of the duck ponds. There's usually always parking spacing available there. So usually there is, you know, you just got to leave the parking lot, got to go across the street, closer towards the church, and you can park.
Well, the good thing is parking's a problem because for years, years out there, that parking lot wasn't used very much and those four businesses that were there didn't survive well. So it's a good thing that there are businesses in and out that are requiring the parking and use of the lot. But I agree, I think we should at least go to public hearing. I mean, we saw what happened with the last one that chief put us into. Not saying that in a bad way, but I mean, let's hear from the people that live there and use it on a daily basis.
As is or with an amendment? Because
No, let's, let's go to a public hearing as is.
Yeah, but if
On the seven spots or
If they go to seven, if you go to three spots
You want to, you want to downsize it a little bit? That's fine with me too.
That way you do one public hearing because then if you change it substantially, then we have to start again. So let's establish.
Well, and it could be the opposite. If we downsize it, they could say they want more, but, you know, whatever. Whatever number everybody feels works. I think we should at least go to public
You have a liaison to parking, but do you find that, you know, maybe a timeframe instead of allocating one hour, like just say between nine and two or something could be utilized as well?
It's a possibility. I mean, I don't know the hours of the restaurant. Are they only open for the dinner hours or do they do a lunch serving also where they might be using?
That might be a better approach, depending on the needs.
All right, so then maybe we gather more information and then we come back.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
All right, why don't we?
Present something that's a little bit
Okay, great. And then maybe if you reach out to us, we can make our recommendation. Then you can come back with the finished copy that we all agree, I think, that'd be good.
Can I, it used to be, you know, it, it's a very, very nice shop that's in there where they, they renovated. It used to be the old gas station. They did a really beautiful job. There's lots of neat things in there. I just don't know, looking at a site plan, whether or not they can allocate some spots, you know, within there where you can park right into their property. I mean, it seems like they should be, yeah, directly across the street from the parking lot. So on Sound Road, where the old gas station is, you know, they've kind of like blocked off and they have a large gathering area. You know, can they not allocate some spots there for their shop? Or were they prevented at some point? You know, so I'd like, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, you know?
Well, why don't you look into it? You know the area very well. You live there.
I, I love the restaurant there. The restaurant there, I love the shops there as well.
Yeah, I do.
They're all great. But I'm just curious about if they were limited, you know, when they did their renovations, you know, from the gas station, maybe they weren't allowed parking, but it seems like, you know, because it's a fire zone. But, you know, could there be some type of limited parking there? Just trying to get, I'm trying to get the whole big picture out of it, you know? If they say, no, well, we want that, but, but town didn't allow us, then we'll look further.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Thank you, guys. I think we're to go.
Yeah, I got 32 other spaces, plus those seven. So for a total of like 39 stalls. But yeah, let's, I agree, let's, let's move on. I just apologize, but I was just able to get it up on the phone.
All right, thank you. And we have our highway superintendent waiting very patiently. Thank you for doing that.
Well, he hasn't had any snow to plow this year, so he's certainly got time on his hands. Knock on wood, right, Mike? All that salt we got saved for next year now?
Oh, yeah, we don't need that salt, bud. Oh, yeah. We all need that salt budget.
Good stuff.
Yeah, we're saving money there.
Well, the nature was kind to us, this winter.
I don't know, just.
Thank you so much. And for our last discussion, we are gonna have another possible code change, uh, the one relating to Chapter 269, related to shopping carts.
Supervisor, just to check, make note of, definitely hand out an amendment at nine twenty-five. And it looks like maybe that got bumped off, the shopping carts got bumped off the list.
It's on the back side.
On the back.
I used to first.
I've never had to flip over for a work session. I apologize.
You're trying to save money. You want it back the old way?
I just wanted to make sure it's still listed in, so it's good.
I gotta get my shopping cart.
Okay, sit down. Congressman Karen has been working on this with Danielle. And Councilman, would you like to please introduce this topic?
Sure. So, uh, somebody working for the town brought it up that there were shopping carts on Rowan Oak Avenue abandoned. And I subsequently spoke to Mike from Highway, and he's telling, telling, and with Danielle, that he's collecting somewhere between eighteen and twenty carts a month, uh, that are just scattered out throughout the town. So, Danielle, with that, we did some research and found out that, um, this is prevalent in, it played other places. And it's the, uh, the loss is significant.
You have a prop today.
In addition, so, the other thing that was unearthed, Tim unearthed one, uh, is this, um, this Wi-Fi locking mechanism. So, it's like a dog fence, but it's for shopping carts. And currently, um, Home Depot is using it, Big Lots is using it, and.
ShopRite.
ShopRite is using it. So, what we want to do is make that, uh, put that in the code that these companies, and it's in the code on fifty-eight, wherever there is, there's shopping carts. We're not including Agway, which, you know, is on Osborne. But they have Wi-Fi locks. So, we don't have shopping carts all over the place. And our highway picking these up and delivering them back to where they came from. So, with that, Danielle, do you want to take it from here on the?
So, part of that was also, um, the prior code involved highway collecting these carts, storing the carts, and then notifying the owners and having to actually hold, requiring them to hold an auction, which we did do at one point. Um, and I believe nobody bid on any of the shopping carts.
Yeah, I think we've collected at that time, minimum a hundred shopping carts, held at auction, no one showed. And then it was our expense to dispose of the carts. It was not cost-effective. Um, I just want to thank Bob and Danielle first for helping with this. They've done a lot of work. So, the way we're gonna hopefully redo this, and again, the shopping carts are just littering the town. Um, it's not only wasting my men's time picking them up, which we do, minimum eighteen, twenty carts a month, minimum. It, it'll really clean this town up. Um, they're all over the place. And now, they're starting to put litter in them, and it's just.
Can you identify where they come from? Do they have names on them?
So, most carts, most carts are identifiable. And changing the code or whatever to have each store contain their carts with Wi-Fi, um, which is something some stores are doing already. And then we're going to continue to pick up whatever stray carts are out there until everybody gets on board. And, um, we found out, we're gonna hopefully propose a way to, you know, tackle that as well financially.
Well, they, they seem to be used for several different reasons. I mean, I, I see people pushing them around town, collecting bottles and cans. I see the homeless people with their lifelong belongings, and I'm pushing them around town and basically living out of the shopping cart. So, if these shopping carts get locked up as, as ShopRite and Home Depot do, once it goes past that Wi-Fi, the, the wheel automatically stops. And now, you've got a cart, like, seems like the one I always pick when I go to the grocery store, one wheel doesn't work.
Yes.
But it makes it very difficult to push the cart with a locked wheel on it.
That is a common phenomenon, by the way.
Yeah, that, that, I get the wrong line at the bank all the time.
No, my shopping carts always work right.
Yeah. And I believe the method they're using now with Wi-Fi, again, it'll be no like buried cable dog fence. Um, I know it'll be a cost for the, for the stores to do this. But I don't think it's, it would be as much as if they're burying wire. But shopping carts are three, maybe four hundred dollars each. And it must be costing them a fortune to keep replacing them. So, it's for their advantage.
How would you, how would you, how would you address, some stores only have six carts because it's a tiny little boutique, and maybe it's gonna cost them five thousand dollars to do something like that and upkeep or upgrade their Wi-Fi, um, as opposed to Home Depot or any other, you know, box stores or?
So, I think, I, so, looking at, and again, this pretty much addresses all stores on fifty-eight's frontage. Some of those small stores, unless I'm wrong, their carts are contained in the store.
Right, okay.
The larger stores, uh, the Home Depot, the ShopRites, or Wallbound's, and King Collins, or whatever, um, they're the ones with hundreds of carts.
Right.
Those are the carts we're really picking up throughout town.
So, we have to make a distinction.
We did that by limiting the location. So, it would be any stores that are on Route fifty-eight, Route twenty-five, and/or Route twenty-five I.
Is there any scrap value that you could turn these things in for? I mean.
So, unless the cart is all.
Right, metal. Right, right, right.
And now, most are plastic. And again, it, it became an expense to dispose of these carts. Not only is my men's salaries picking them up, then the cost to get rid of them.
When I spoke to one of the managers at ShopRite, uh, she was telling me that they had, when they first opened up, they had thirty of these carts that you would pull by hand. That, so if you didn't need a big shopping cart, you had a smaller type cart. All thirty of them disappeared within no time, before they had the system set up on it. And the people from Riverhead Landing back behind there would come to the store every day with that cart and then leave again with that cart. It just became.
That's right. They have the backend.
A method, right. It became a method for them to use that cart as their own personal cart. So, they had to replace all those carts. And they've now added a wireless system, so they don't lose them.
Yeah, it's, it's really for the store's advantage, as well as keeping the litter off of this town. And we're hoping in one year's time, you'll see maybe just a handful of carts that escape the Wi-Fi, um, zone or whatever.
Eric, can we look into a situation where, say, if we have somebody pushing a cart that belongs to store X, and they're a mile and away, a mile and a half away from that store pushing it down Route fifty-eight, would we, yeah, we get like an affidavit to those stores and have them sign that nobody has permission to take my shopping cart off my property? And could the police, then effect, make an arrest for possession of stolen property? I mean, that's an extreme.
Yes, you could. The code currently provides for a penalty for pushing the shopping carts along, I believe it's Main Street and fifty-eight.
Yeah. It's a town code violation to be in possession of a shopping cart.
Okay, that I was aware of.
Yeah. So, uh, it's a town code violation to be in possession of a shopping cart that doesn't belong to you. So, in that situation, uh, the individual would be ticketed. And with that being said, we did increase the penalties, um, in this section. So, that individual, in that situation, the individual would be taken in on the.
As they should, because, I mean, really, it's the store's property, and the store's not giving them permission to walk off with their shopping carts. And, you know, the people are taking them out, and they're leaving them, and the store's getting penalized. But, so we should have a way to be able to.
Yeah, they're, they're basically stealing the cart.
Right. Correct. Correct.
You know, the other thing that came, came up is, and a good example is when, in the TJ's parking lot right there, so there's a bus stop on, on fifty-eight. So, what people are doing is they're going to grocery store and then bringing their cart down of the bus and then leaving their cart there.
Right.
And so, this, this will clean it up. The fines have increased from fifty dollars, uh, to two hundred and fifty dollars and not more than a thousand. And one of the interesting things that we unearthed, and we looked, uh, in the Seattle area, where there's a tremendous amount of homeless people, almost all the towns surrounding Seattle have this in place because of the amount of carts that are stolen.
Correct.
And internationally, and I forgot the national, it's an, it's eight hundred million dollars worth of theft. And these carts are four hundred to six hundred dollars apiece. So, give me an idea. All these does a great job. You, you pay a deposit, right? And you wanna get, you know, you get your money back.
You put a quarter in, take it out, and you'd have to bring it back to get your quarter.
Anyway.
Okay.
Thanks, Danielle. And Mike, thanks for bringing it. You know, I mean, it's important.
All right.
And just one more quick comment. The stores we're aiming this at are the big corporate stores. It's not the mom and pops.
Not at all.
Who have five carts, or like the Dollar Store. They don't leave the store with the carts. The carts stay inside there, like they mentioned before. Um, and it's not a tremendously expensive program to put in that Wi-Fi system.
No.
To do that. So, I'm sure we're not hurting, you know, the stopping shops of the world by doing this, but it will help clean up the town for sure.
Yeah. The, the objective was absolutely not to target anybody. The objective was to, uh, is to not have highway with this incre, you know.
Right.
Increase of shopping carts all over the place.
Fifteen to twenty carts a month.
Taxpayers are paying.
Absolutely.
You know, to find, to take the supermarket's carts, pick them up, and bring them back to them. And now, there's gonna be a fee for that, which will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars, where we were getting zero. There's the shopping cart. Larry, did you get a picture of that shopping cart on the tables? Come on.
Thanks again for entertaining us. Thank you.
No, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
So, what happens if it's a mini shopping? It's zero for you?
Half price.
Throw him in jail.
Yeah, it goes up. The penalty goes up. Okay, thank you, everyone.
The leaves. No, Denise.
And this is gonna conclude our work session for today. Uh, can I have a first and a second to close this work session, please?
Second.
All in favor, all opposed? So, move. Everyone, please be safe. And, uh, weekend's coming up. Looks like it's gonna be a good one. And there's a couple of viruses going around, uh, the RSV and the stomach virus. Um, make sure that you, um, protect yourself if you can. And, um, best of luck. And we'll see you, um, at the next session. Take care.